Ready when you are.
Okay, let's go ahead and take roll call.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
And we have six.
Oh, and Mr. Bedell. Mr. Bedell is on as well.
Right.
Here.
Thank you.
We got six, right?
We have seven.
Oh, I'll go to Todd's here, okay.
Six, seven, yes.
Okay, first item is, uh, need a motion to accept the minutes from the Planning Commission Public Hearing, an executive session of, uh, July seventeenth.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, seven zero. Uh, we have no status sheet, no committee reports. So go to the first new business item, which is PC twenty-two dash twenty-three AT&amp;T Mobility.
PC twenty-two dash twenty-three AT&amp;T Mobility is in a request for an amended CUP in the NU Non-Urban District. The tract size is zero point zero five seven acres and is located on the west side of Christopher Drive at Dacia Lane. As you can see on the left, it is located in South County and you can see an aerial of the site on the right. As you can see here, on all sides, the site is surrounded by residential homes. And here is the preliminary site development plan. On it, it shows a four hundred square foot tower lease area on which will be a hundred and twenty-five feet tall power tower, including the lightning round. Um, there is a twenty-one hundred square foot equipment lease area and both of these will be accessed by an eight-foot wide utility easement. Here is the tower elevation. The tower is a hundred and twenty feet with a five-foot lightning rod attached. The recommended SDP provisions are a six-foot site proof decorative fence surrounding the telecommunication tower lease area and landscaping surrounding the telecommunication tower lease area as well. We are recommending approval as the CUP procedure is the appropriate um, mechanism to permit a telecommunication tower greater than forty feet in height in the NU Non-Urban District. In addition, the request meets the requirements of the CUP procedure. And the specific conditions of development will be, um, the ground equipment area shall be property landscaped, all fencing surrounding the tower equipment shall be site-proof and decorative, and the tower shall not exceed a hundred and twenty-five feet in overall height. And at this moment, we request a motion.
Motion for approval.
We have a second?
Second a motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, seven zero. Uh, next item, PC twenty-four dash twenty, uh, rather twenty-three dash twenty-three All Rig USA.
Good evening. PC twenty-three dash twenty-three All Rig USA is a request for an amended C-eight for two point five nine acres located on the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road at Town South Road and northwest of Old Tesson Road. As the commission may recall from the July seventeenth meeting, this site is located in South County right along Tesson Ferry Road. The site is outlined in red on your right. Here's a larger aerial view with that site outlined in red. As you can see, there is commercial frontage along Tesson Ferry Road with residential homes behind that commercial frontage. At the July seventeenth public hearing, this preliminary site development plan was presented showing a five thousand three hundred square foot building for Chick-fil-A with a dual drive-through lane and a two thousand four hundred square foot building for Chipotle with a single drive-through lane. As the commission may note, this site, both, uh, buildings have the drive-through lanes in the front yard, which is not, um, allowed by the zoning ordinance, but this, as the site has three front yards, this was the best configuration that, uh, the petitioner could come up with with staff. Um, they also on this preliminary plan show removal of the curb cut along Town South Road and show two curb cuts along Old Tesson Road. They also show a hundred and sixteen parking spaces. All they are required to have is ninety-eight. And then they mentioned at public hearing that the underground stormwater management would be, um, put in place of the detention basin that is currently on the site. Um, they also note that there will be twenty-four outdoor seating spots at the Chick-fil-A site and twenty at the Chipotle site. There is also a retaining wall, um, proposed wall along Old Tesson Ferry to, uh, screen existing utility, um, boxes that are already on the site. There will also be two conjoined trash, um, enclosures and a storage enclosure for Chick-fil-A and one single trash enclosure for Chipotle on the site as well. These are the preliminary architectural elevations for Chipotle. Um, as you can see, the north and east, um, elevations have the most windows and doorways for entrance. Um, to the west where you can see the service door and, um, a ladder leading to the rooftop access along at with utility services such as gas and electric meters on the back. This will be facing Tesson Ferry Road. And then the south elevation shows the pickup window, which that window also juts out a little bit from the original building. These are the Chick-fil-A architectural elevations that were presented. Both, um, the light and tan is brick facade, is brick veneer on the building. Um, on the Chick-fil-A site, there will be two canopies. One will be over the menu boards and the other will be above the pickup window, which you can see on these architectural elevations. These will be, um, in a metal and a dark metal. They also show a rendering of the trash enclosures and the storage unit. Um, just to kind of give an example. This, the petitioner also did provide staff with an actual photo from another Chick-fil-A site where they have the conjoined trash enclosures in the storage building, um, showing the site-proof, um, site-proof fence and the brick for the storage room. Subsequent to the public hearings, the petitioner did provide staff with a revised preliminary site development plan um, to show where a six-foot-tall monument sign would be added to the western property line in the vicinity of the Chick-fil-A. No other changes were made to the revised preliminary site development plan other than the sign. Staff is recommending some revisions to the site development plan, um, noting that one free standing business sign is to be placed along Tesson Ferry Road for the two businesses to share. Any additional informational or directional signage shall be as approved on the site development plan. Staff is also recommending eliminating eighteen parking spaces fronting Old Tesson Road and expanding the landscape buffer yard. This is to help kind of minimize, um, the site of the two commercial parcels, um, of the two commercial buildings from the residence along Old Tesson Ferry Road. Staff is also recommending that lighting standards along the east of the proposed buildings be limited to sixteen feet in height to also eliminate light, um, falling over onto the residential parcels. For recommendations for the architectural elevations, staff is recommending that all side, for the Chipotle, staff is recommending that all sides be equally treated, all rooftop equipment be adequately screened, exterior enclosures be clad in brickstone and other masonry materials, and that decorative lighting of facades, including wall sconces, be required. Um, staff will also note, um, that these following conditions are not currently in the staff report, but staff will add them to the letter, to the commission's letter of recommendation if the commission chooses to do so. Um, that the building shall be clad in a hundred percent brickstone or other high-quality materials utilizing at least two colors and that utility services and roof access shall not be visible from any right-of-ways. And then for the Chick-fil-A, um, architectural elevation revisions, staff will, staff notes that all sites need to be equally treated, all rooftop equipment be adequately screened, exterior enclosures be clad in brickstone and other masonry materials, decorative light, lighting of facades, including wall sconces be required. The building shall be clad in, um, a hundred percent brickstone or other high-quality materials utilizing at least two colors. The canopy structures shall be a style that complements the primary structure and the base cabinet of the monument sign that is in the vicinity of the Chick-fil-A, um, match the materials and architectural style of the building. Staff is recommending approval. The C-eight plan commercial district continues to be the appropriate zoning mechanism for the proposed development as it will ensure conditions of development. The proposed use of the commercial zoned site for two fast-food restaurants with drive-through facilities is appropriate along State Highway twenty-one, a major commercial corridor. Lighting standards shall be limited to sixteen feet in height on the east side of the building to decrease the impact of, on the residences across Old Tesson Road. And the required landscaping and attachment C is in excess of the requirement of the zoning ordinance to, in order to maximize the green space on this site. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Thank you, Greg. We have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a first and second? Um, questions, comments?
Yes, I have a, I have a couple questions, I guess. Um, in looking at the information provided by staff, uh, and unfortunately, I was not at the public hearing, but, um, reading through those, there seemed to be uh, some significant concerns and I was just wondering how these things have been addressed in this, uh, submittal. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the things, I guess, is this, uh, uh, one of the more major things is access from, uh, I guess that's, uh, it's not having, uh, access from Old Tesson Ferry Road where that used to be the access to the site for the, uh, Bank of America building. And having two there in a, in a much smaller road, uh, that's accessed by other residential developments. Uh, there seem to be a big concern. Has, has any, anyone addressed that issue with the developer?
So.
Oh, go ahead, Mel.
What I was just going to say was, so county transportation has indicated they would not, not approve access to this development from Town South. Um, the two curb cuts on Old Tesson would meet the county's access management guidelines. And then additionally, the developer did submit a traffic impact study that demonstrates that, that the site could support these uses. Um, does that address, I guess, Jacob, anything you have to add to that?
No, that's a, that's essentially what I, excuse me, is what I was going to say is that, um, county transportation has reviewed the, the basic configuration and finds it to be generally sound, um, that it would, they would remove, uh, that one entrance on Town South. Um, and the reason why they want two is for, um, truck maneuvers through the site, um, is why they, is why they want to, um, two access points onto Old Tesson.
But St. Louis County approved access from, uh, uh, Old Tesson Ferry Road in the past.
From Town South.
Yeah, I'm sorry, from Town South. Thank you. From Town South. And did they give us any reason of why it, it's not approved today other than?
Their recommendation is based on their current, their current design, uh, criteria. Uh, my understanding is, is that that section of Town South between Tesson Ferry Road and Old Tesson Road is quite short. Um, and it is for distance requirements and for, and for access management. It's not desirable to have that extra access onto Town, or onto Town South. So the county DOT finds that Old Tesson Road is, is appropriate for, uh, for that access.
I guess that's not, uh, that are, are, are concerned. Um, but I would certainly, uh, have, have concern for, for approaching it that way. Uh, it's no, no further away than the entrances to Tesson Ferry Road by putting them all on the other side. Um, the other thing was, uh, the, uh, issues of, uh, privacy fencing and that for the daycare centers. Has there been any, uh, follow-up with that?
Yes, we did receive, um, written comment from the, I think, the landlord, the property owner of the residence to the south, or, excuse me, the childcare center to the south. So we've written conditions to have some options for, for the treatment there. Um, right now, there's a guardrail. The seat or the text of attachment C is drafted would require a fence and a landscape buffer there, uh, with the, of, the option to install a guardrail as well. But there would be more distance and landscaping, uh, between these two uses that doesn't exist today.
Okay, so we would approve that on, uh, on the, uh?
When the plan comes back to you, you would see that on the, on the site plan and the landscaping plan.
A fence needs to be there. We have them put a fence in. Is that correct?
We've written it to already require a fence.
Oh, I didn't know that. Yeah. Okay, that's, that's good.
I'm not misspeaking.
Uh, just for my information, one, uh, we read through these, uh, I hear where the facade should be, uh, either masonry or other high-quality materials. Can you define for me what is considered a high-quality material?
That is a very good and timely question, Mr. Sneed. So, um, the department has written it with stones, with brickstone or other high-quality material for, um, a couple of years now, but we've been talking about, um, putting into place a written policy that lays out what those materials would be. Because right now, what we do is we, um, during the review process, we have a negotiation with the developer to ensure that they fully explain the materiality of the site, um, the, the types of materials that they would show on the exterior and we discuss those, um, on a case-by-case basis. So that is how the county currently, um, enforces its high-quality material, um, stipulation in C-eights. But there is a future where, um, there is a, an opportunity for the planning commission to, staff to create a, a guide and then the planning commission to review that guide for what that, for what that entails. But we do not have that guide currently.
Okay, uh, by example, uh, the new Starbucks on Telegraph Road had that same wording in because I went back and checked it. And I checked it because I was trying to answer a lot of people's questions about why does it look the way it looks? Uh, I, I don't know what kind of material there, it's there, but it's, uh, it's, it's not the high-quality materials that I think we envisioned, uh, when we approved that.
So one option could be is that, um, if the, if the term high-quality material, if the commission finds that that terminology has too much latitude at this point, that could be struck. Um, and it could be something to the effect of brickstone, masonry, um, or similar types of materials that will increase the cost to the developer to do so. And I'm, that, I do not say that in a way to, to preclude the commission from doing so. I just want to lay out that that, um, is, would be the, would be the outcome. Um, but there are, that, that is one thing that the commission could do. Um, until at some point in the future, the, the department has a draft, um, high-quality materials guide that the commission, um, can, can, can use and approve. Um, you know, so that, that is an option for the, for the commission to, um, to take and to direct staff. We could, we can rewrite, we can rewrite it in a way that's a bit more prescriptive, um, if that's the will of the commission.
Well, then I look forward to that and I appreciate the explanation. That's it for me.
Okay, anyone else?
I just got one question. And the last, uh, study for the, down in the South County area, what, what did they come up with when it came to fast-food restaurants? How many fast-food restaurants? Because we've had issues with too many liquor stores, too many car washes. And now we have place pulled out of bank and we're putting two. And I don't want to say fast food, but fast food place, uh, restaurants.
To date, I don't believe that there has been, um, a significant study done of the number of fast-food restaurants in unincorporated St. Louis County. Um, although what I will say is that as we are preparing to embark on a new comprehensive plan that will tackle, um, land use from a whole lot of, from a whole lot of perspectives, I, I think that, um, it is a ripe conversation for the county to be having to be talking about what is the future of our commercial corridors? What types of uses do we want to be having on our corridors and what do we want those uses to look like? So that the next generation of St. Louis Countyans can be proud of the community that they live in and it builds the, the sort of, uh, communities that we really want. Um, but we, I am unaware of any significant study. Mel, did the two thousand South County Center plan say anything?
It said, you know, that commercial development should be in this area along Tesson Ferry should be oriented towards the frontage of Tesson Ferry. And then I can't remember the exact language, but in terms of recommending land uses, it was more broad in terms of just, um, what people would need, you know, what, what services and goods people would need. It didn't address it in terms of, um, like they didn't call fast-food restaurants out specifically as a desirable or undesirable land use. Um, it was more about where that commercial development should be located and that it should utilize planned district or special procedure zoning where available, but not as detailed as in, you know, these uses versus those uses.
Well, I'm not saying they're undesirable. I just see that where they, you have them on this corner ten years ago and they decide they need to move down on the next corner ten years later. Like a, uh, service station or a gas station, as some of those do.
And that's very fair. And I think that is what, I think that's one of the, um, opportunities that the county has in front of it as we go through the comprehensive planning process, which is that what you're describing is leapfrog development, which is you develop at one location, you sort of extract all the value out of it, um, you, and then you move down the road a little bit ways and you, and you sort of, and the, and the process sort of starts all over again, um, which becomes very lucrative for property owners who have the wherewithal to do so, but it becomes a, a burden on local governments to, um, you know, what, for that very issue over time. Um, so, uh, I think that, to be honest, I think that you're, I, I think that this is something that we have to discuss, um, about what does the future built environment look like for the county?
Thanks, Jacob.
Anyone else?
Yes, I, I have a couple things.
Go ahead.
One question I had was, what's the increase in the residential, um, occupancy that we're going to have down Tesson Ferry with the new development? Is that something that, um, would require, say, additional restaurants or is it just not enough to really impact that kind of thing?
Is this in regards to perhaps the new, the, the new, uh, residences particularly across the street at Tesson, or nearby at Tesson Ridge?
Yeah.
So the Tesson Ridge development permits, I'm pulling up the ordinance for the max, the maximum. Um, two hundred and ten apartments in the main structure, one hundred and ten, one hundred and seventy total, uh, single-family homes in the surrounding portion of the site. Okay.
So three hundred and, what is that, three hundred and eight, three hundred and eighty? Am I doing my math right? Three, I don't remember. Close to four hundred new residences. Yeah, close to.
And also in that development, the, uh, property, property, uh, there's commercial property that runs all along, uh, Tesson Ferry Road. And I would suspect there'll be some more, uh, restaurants and everything else you can think of there.
Yes, so the, the two commercial outlets of the Tesson Ridge development would also add services and, you know, would permit restaurants, not restaurants with drive-through facilities, um, but there would be that commercial component to that development as well.
Okay, um, I have, I do have another question. Part of the pub, public comment was about the lack of sidewalks on the other side of Old Tesson. And I didn't know if that's something that gets addressed, you know, as part of this proposal or not. I did drive by there and I can say that I feel like that road's too busy to really walk on. So you would have to cross over Old Tesson in order to get to a sidewalk.
So this developer wouldn't be required to do that sort of off-site improvement? Um, and I see on the aerial that, on the other side of Old Tesson, how there aren't sidewalks. And what I, what I'll say is that generally where sidewalks are installed along residences is that the time that the parcel is platted out and these were, I'm just imagining platted so long ago that we didn't require a sidewalk or our policy found that having a sidewalk on the commercial side was sufficient at the time, depending on the volume. But to answer your question directly, the developer wouldn't have to, the petitioner wouldn't have to do a sidewalk on the other side.
Would it be, would it be appropriate for, uh, the planning commission to, uh, suggest or request, uh, the county to look into, uh, improvements to that road?
So typically, so typically, what, how I think that planning commissions in general are able to, are one of the ways that they have, that they're able to exert influence over the built environment is going to be through various planning documents. So I do think that, um, as, as we go through the, the comprehensive planning process, I'm gonna, I, it's already going to be talking about ways that policies are, when we do develop, ensuring that we get, um, multimodal sorts of types of use requirements and sort of those types of, uh, abilities to develop that. So what you're looking at for like an Old Tesson Road, if we were, if the county were to look at doing a sidewalk project, you're really looking at a, at a capital, at basically needing to find capital funds to, uh, invest into Old Tesson Road. One of the issues that, that you're going, that we walk into, and Mel, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that Old Tesson Road is, I think, by and large, it's categorized as essentially one of our local roads. And as such, that means St. Louis County, we can't, it'd be a struggle for us to even go to the federal government or state government to try to get federal funding for eventual capital projects along Tesson Road, which is one of the struggles that local governments have, uh, when we develop our roads in such a way that, um, the infrastructure that, that's required along our roads becomes so expensive, um, and we didn't build it to begin with. So Tesson Road with it being a local road would be, the county would be looking at it, at, at, at trying to fund it itself at some point in the future.
Okay, but, but isn't it, uh, uh, reasonable to expect that if we're going to have this development, that we provide, the county provides the infrastructure to support it?
I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with that from a, from a, from a high, from a high perspective. Um, zeroing in on this site, we only have the legal ability through ordinance and, and sort of through other sort of legal precedents that have been set that, um, with our framework right here in St. Louis County to require for them to make certain improvements upon their site. Um, but this is also our TGA. Um, so when someone, someone puts money into TGA, which they will be required to do so because this is a C-eight, so they will be required to put money into the county's TGA trust fund. Um, those monies are then used to mitigate the impact that the development has on funding the infrastructure for, uh, for the county. Now that's then where I suppose that's then where the, the sort of balance in terms of how do we spend those monies and who is in charge of those monies, um, and making those, those policy decisions from, at that sort of level. Um, that's then when it becomes a, you know, a bit more, you, you, you start balancing various projects against one another. Um, I don't want to speak for the Department of Transportation. I don't want to speak for the Department of Transportation, um, and, and, you know, about the, you know, demand on Old Teson to add an additional sidewalk. I would, I would just say that from my experience, I would say it would probably not something that's high on their priority at this point, based on the numbers that they see. Um, and the other projects that they have at their, at their sort of, on their balance.
Who does control the TGA?
That is the Department of Transportation Public Works. So they are charged with um, making the determinations and, and going after the projects that, that govern the TGA.
Choice of when to spend it on sidewalks and when not to spend it.
Within the confines of the ordinance, yes, and, and within the policy documents, um, which I am not an expert on. Um, I think that that would, uh, I, I don't want to speak too far out of turn, but in general, it is TPW's discretion.
I mean, in the past, we, we've had the funds in petitions and they've chosen not to put in sidewalks because of future projects would openly.
That's correct. That's correct. I think the, the, probably the best example of that right now is the Tesla site. Which on Lindbergh is a site that if the commission has driven past it, you've noticed that there have not been sidewalks put in along the frontage of the Tesla. And the rationale for that is that because we know and Moda is, is working on a, to add sidewalks along the entirety of that frontage for a good long ways. So if we'd put sidewalks in it at construction, they would have been torn up and then re, and then put back in. So that's why you, that's an example of that kind of case, uh, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Hey Wayne?
Yeah.
I just have, I have a question. We had brought up, we had brought up the building materials and that stating that it would be, you know, brick, stone, masonry or similar material. And I just wanted to know, was that in the motion?
We, if it's okay with the maker, the first and second, we can add it.
I was the second, it's okay with me.
So, okay. And who's the first?
Well, I, I'm okay with the language as is. I think the rendering shows what the material, it looks like every Chick pot, Chipotle and Chick-fil-A I, I've ever seen. But i- if that's what it takes, that's, that's fine too.
I was just trying to clarify, I, I mean, I'm interested in how everybody feels about it.
They have a, they have a drive-it system, a plastering system that's on both those buildings, so that would cut that out. And that, that is quite expensive.
Uh, Mel, Jacob, do we have any? We've got architectural review. Does that give us any leeway down the road?
Well, what I'd like to, I, what I hate to do is I hate to do a full review and then bring it in the commission not like it. So that is, because we al, we always only bring it to you when we think that it has met the letter of the ordinance as approved. So I, I don't want to leave too much ambiguity uh, to, to put people through. So what I'm wondering is, is if we, Mel, maybe we have a discussion subsequent to this, uh, subsequent to this with the petitioner. And asking what, because with the, with the Chick-fil-A, it is a brick veneer and you can see it, the materiality, it does look like brick. Which I think from my perspective, what I will say is that as it appears like brick, if you touched it, it touches, it feels like brick. That, that does meet through the sort of idea of the high quality material. The, the Chipotle, I think, has an opportunity perhaps to do something a, a little bit higher quality. Perhaps we go back to the uh, petitioner subsequent to this. And then when this comes back to you in your letter of recommendation form, we will have, uh, inform the commission of, of their actions. Or, or, or the discussion um, about that materiality.
And we could amend it at that point?
Yes.
We could certainly do that.
Is that okay with you Sandy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, anyone else? Okay, with that.
Hang on a minute, Wayne, I thought I was, I didn't know I was on mute. Aren't we changing the way that we normally do these things? I mean, if, if, if it says uh, certain building materials will be used, and then all of a sudden we want to change that to, to give specifics, aren't we really taking the leeway away from the the developer? When he goes into this, he's, he's reading the ordinance and what it says, and he's applying, you know, what we've said, now all of a sudden we're going to change it.
It's a good point.
And that's certainly what I want to avoid. I don't want somebody, um, I don't want somebody who, who, because the, the development process requires a certain amount of certainty subsequent to um, the zoning process to give the developer uh, an understanding of the value of, of what they're doing and, and how they're going to be able to make the development work. So that is where before this became, comes in ordinance, we would want that to be very clear. Um, and have that discussion, staff can go back to the petitioner, discuss that materiality and get a little bit more clarity. Especially knowing that particularly for the Chipotle, the commission would like to see a little bit higher quality. Maybe it's not full brick because that is quite inexpensive, but you can do something that, that is perhaps a, of, of a higher quality. But I do, I concur that providing too much ambiguity and then coming back and telling somebody after a review, um, that it, that it doesn't meet is the worst of all possible worlds in terms of just administration from a, from the department's perspective, as well as if you're the developer and, and feeling like you're not getting certainty from, from the county.
And the other thing, when you come up with this list, there's only so many building materials used on the exterior of a building. It's not like it's an unlimited list of a thousand different materials. I mean, you've got brick, brick veneer, uh, drive-it system. I mean, let's face it, you're, you're kind of limited on your choices anyway.
And what I will say is that there are jurisdictions, and I think we're moving closer in that direction, although I think it's perfectly, I think it's perfectly valuable for the commission to, to determine how far in the direction it wants to go of being a bit more prescriptive. In the, in, in these material sorts of requirements. There are some jurisdictions, and I wouldn't necessarily advocate for it, that are extremely prescriptive uh, in architectural review. The county, I think, is moving towards a, a, a nice, happy medium of still requiring higher quality materiality. And developers are starting to get that and sort of understanding that after years of, of these C8s that are being written in this way, without getting to the very detailed minutia that some jurisdictions can get into that lead to um, arguments over very minor, uh, very minor issues, which I, I think we want to avoid in general, um, as much as possible.
Anyone else?
So, so does it sound like we should prescribe that that is going into it as opposed to trying to change it, is that right, Jacob?
I, that would be my general policy, yes, is that by the time this ordinance gets passed through council, the, the petitioner should know pretty clearly what the requirement is going to be. And that they, that what they're, what they propose is in general going to meet what the commission's recommendation was.
Is that what we're voting on?
I believe so, because at subsequent, sometime this week, we will reach out to the petitioner to bring to them this discussion. That we want a little bit more understanding particularly of the Chipotle. And that we would like to see something a, a little bit higher quality than what they have provided. And we will try to get a revised for you to see at your, um, at a subsequent meeting. Whether we can get it in a week, when we have public hearing, or whether it needs to wait, um, will depend upon how responsive the petitioner is.
Thank you. Okay, um, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I have it seven, zero. And next item is PC twenty-four dash twenty-three Aldi Inc.
Good evening commissioners, this is PC twenty-four dash twenty-three Aldi Inc. It's a request for a change in zoning from the C2 Shopping District to C8 Plan Commercial District and C8 Plan Commercial District to an amended C8 Plan Commercial District. It's on a four point nine eight acre tract on the north of intersection of Old Teson Ferry Road and Griffin Road and east of Teson Ferry Road. As you may remember from public hearing, the site is located in South County. Um, on the right, you can see the site outlined in red on the aerial. This larger aerial shows the proximity to the Teson Ridge mixed-use development and other commercial uses along Teson Ferry Road and Old Teson Ferry Road, as well as the surrounding single-family residential patterns outside that frontage. Before you is the preliminary site development plan. It shows a twenty-three thousand square foot grocery store building that allows for a two thousand square foot expansion area. And on that northern lot, the uh, site plan shows a hundred and eight parking spaces. On Lot B, which you can see, this is the southern lot. There's an existing five thousand square foot medical office building that's currently vacant. Um, and they're showing forty parking spaces. The preliminary site plan shows uh, four curb cut entrances. One, I guess, three curb cut entrances and then one uh, cross-access easement from that northern section above the grocery store that allows access past the nearby fast food restaurant. Thank you Jacob, from Butler Hill Road. And then we have two other entrances, uh, one entrance from Teson Ferry and then two from Old Teson Ferry. Uh, one of which would access the medical office building. Uh, here are the preliminary architectural elevations uh, for the front of that Aldi grocery store proposal. You can see it's um, mixtures of colors and with a brick facade. And here is the rear side elevations, um, that once again show a brick facade. But now it's more or less exclusively that dark gray color. Uh, additionally, subsequent to public hearing, um, through communication with the department, the uh, design team for the petitioner submitted a mock-up of a business sign inlaid in the proposed retaining wall. That's on the intersection of Old Teson Ferry Road and Teson Ferry Road. So the site does, uh, the staff does have uh, some recommended site development plan revisions. Excess parking spaces shall be constructed with pervious pavement. All graded areas shall be planted with native and or low maintenance drought resistant grasses. All freestanding signage shall be monument in style. The two lots shall be per, permitted one freestanding business sign each. And the retaining wall shall require architectural lighting. And for the architectural elevations, all facades of the grocery store buildings shall receive equal treatment and other embellishments. Examples are fenestration, architectural lighting and awnings. And affirming that one business sign may be affixed to the proposed retaining wall at the corner of Teson Ferry Road and Old Teson Ferry Road. And the staff uh, would encourage uh, the developer to incorporate a local reference to kind of build a sense of community on that intersection. Uh, the department is recommending approval. Uh, department finds that the C8 Plan Commercial District procedure is appropriate for developing the proposed use. Believes that the proposed, proposed use of a grocery store and an office, medical office aligns with, you know, the general development trajectory of the area and aligns with the recommendations of the Sixth County Council District Community Area Study from the year two thousand. Further, the department believes that the C2 Shopping District permitted, permitted uses are appropriate for the existing medical office building um, for future redevelopment with some specific prohibitions which are prohibiting retail liquor sales and marijuana facilities at that uh, existing building. And at this point, uh, I'd like to request a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I can make a motion for approval?
Do we have a second?
Second?
Discussion, anyone?
I, I have a question about the size of the store. Does anyone know the typical size, typical of an Aldi? Just trying to get a sense of uh, scope, scale? No?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I'm wondering whether I can find an answer online real fast. Let me see if they.
I think the, the new stores are probably about that size, anything that's built on its own.
So this is from Aldi, Aldi Corporate, um, is just in this, so I'm just Googling this. So um, Aldi Corporate, their website says that their stores are typically sized nowadays from seventeen thousand to eighteen thousand square feet.
So this would be larger than that?
Uh, I think it'd be modestly larger, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Going back to previous uh, petitions for this property here. Help me out, was it a Walmart or? Somebody once put a sort of a grocery store there before. And you remember that, uh?
Wayne? That was, it was, it was the grocery store for, for the Walmart.
Walmart, yeah, one of their specialty kind of stores, not.
The neighborhood market.
Yeah, 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 neighborhood market. And we, we really, uh, I, I haven't had time to go back and, and really look at that, but we were not in favor of that for some reason. And I wouldn't want, me personally would not want to be inconsistent with that. If I'm missing something, does anybody, can anybody help me there?
So I had the old, I didn't find any record and I don't know if Peter did in, in terms of zoning history. I don't know if it was withdrawn. But that was brought up in public comment as well. So we couldn't find like the commission's report necessarily from that. I don't know if it was withdrawn before an information report was presented, um, or what specifically had happened.
It wasn't the same site though, was it?
Yes, I believe it was.
Okay. I thought it was up closely to the gas station.
Can we see that? Let me, let me say something about these Aldi stores. They keep them clean, they keep them nice, they keep the outside cleaned up, the inside cleaned up.
I think the hours of operation for the Walmart was, was an issue.
Yes.
Alright. That, that may be one of the big reasons there, you're right. I was just curious, I, I hate to be inconsistent, but I could not, didn't have um, the information to go back and check it. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, but the record shows seven, zero. We have one letter for approval, PC twenty-one dash twenty-three TriStar.
So this is a request for a change in zoning to the MXD Mixed Use Development District for a roughly eighteen acre site on the east side of Timber Run Drive, north of Olive. Uh, the commission will recall, this is the site of the former Youth Bridge Organization. Um, and has been the subject of a few zoning petitions in the past. At the July Executive Meeting, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval based on the staff recommendation, which recommended the approval of the uh, multiple family development for the apartment, the apartment building, as well as two out parcels, which would permit one freestanding fast food restaurant with a drive-through facility. And then um, commercial uses including a pickup window at the other building. So, so that is the letter of recommendation that's before the commission today. It's consistent with that recommendation from the July Executive Meeting. However, subsequent to that action, the petitioner did submit a, a letter requesting a couple of modifications to the uh, conditions and attachment C. The first are minor changes to a couple of the setback requirements for the, for the structures and the parking. We find that those are reasonable minor changes and have adjusted the letter of recommendation to reflect those two changes. The more substantial requested modification is the petitioner is requesting that two stand- is the petitioner is requesting that two standalone fast food restaurants be permitted in the out parcels. Their rationale is, there's multiple aspects to their rationale. They feel that Olive Boulevard can accommodate the two standalone fast food restaurants that the site is not, precluding them does not have the total walkability effect that the MXD is intended for and that proposing the fast food restaurants with drive-through facilities is part of what they want to provide to the residents in the area, including the residents of that Timber Run subdivision who are really interested in the development of the site. So their letter is in the packet, but the planning department finds that the intent of the MXD is to reduce automobile travel. So they have requested these modifications, but we did not modify the letter of recommendation to allow two fast food restaurants, as we do not find it's in keeping with the intent of the MXD. However, if the planning commission, upon this additional information, finds that it would be reasonable to recommend to the county council to permit two fast food restaurants, we can amend the letter of recommendation. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Isn't there, isn't there a new Chick-fil-A going up like across the street? Or at Mason and Olive?
I don't know specifically. I don't know if that's unincorporated.
That would be Creve Court technically, but.
Okay. I'm not totally familiar then.
There's a Chick-fil-A going up right around that area. But I don't know, that's Creve Court.
Incorporated.
Right. Okay, never mind.
So Mel, Mel, are you saying that staff would not recommend?
We do not recommend allowing for a second standalone drive-through facility.
And can you just go over again your thoughts on why not?
Sure. So the core rationale is that the stated intent in the zoning ordinance of the MXD Mixed Use Development District is to minimize automobile travel. And what we found is by introducing such a density of residential, you know, by building this apartment building, there is that sort of captive residential density that is completely walkable towards these two sites. And for that reason, these two out parcels can be developed with non-auto-oriented uses. But as a compromise, we've recommended that one of them be permitted to have a standalone free, fast food restaurant with a drive-through and that the other be permitted to have a pickup window. So while that's not a, you know, a traditional fast food restaurant, you know, the planning commission, I think the main iteration of that type of use you've seen is how Emo's Pizza does it lately. They have the pickup window where you order ahead and then you just, you pick up. So it doesn't have quite the activity as the full-blown standalone fast food restaurant. But that's sort of the middle ground, you know, to allow for, to capture some of that auto travel from Olive, but still, you know, utilizing the benefit of having those residences there in the apartment building that's part of this development as well.
Having heard your explanation, that makes a lot of sense. And I appreciate the input.
I have another question. Is the Burger King across the street, is that going to stay? Or what's the plan for that?
So that's separate from this site, totally separate. And but that is an existing Burger King. And then actually, Christopher, to your point, the Chick-fil-A is at the old TGI Fridays to the east near Olive and 270.
Okay, so it's a little further down, okay. Yeah.
But the Burger King is a fast food restaurant with a drive-through right across the street, but is separate from this MXD proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jacob, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't. I think that you covered that very well, Mel, and I appreciate it. But, and we just wanted to make sure that we were very clear on the petitioner's request so that the commission was fully informed as it makes its decision tonight. But staff continues to recommend forwarding the letter as provided, which is consistent with your actions from your last meeting.
With that, we need a motion?
Well, I got one more.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I think there is a crazy bull's that wraps across the street from this this potential project right now. But never mind.
And that across the street is the city of Creve Court.
Is it incorporated as well?
Right, and the city of Creve Court has pretty, they have more strict requirements as it comes to drive-through facilities than unincorporated St. Louis County. So it is more difficult to construct a drive-through facility across the street than it is at this parcel in unincorporated county.
Right now, they're not saying they have anyone.
That is correct. As of right now, we have not been given any definitive tenants. I think that they're still in the marketing phase of that process.
I'd like to make a motion to go with the staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven, zero. No old business, no correspondence. We got one site plan. PC 15-21.
Good evening. Before you have PC 15-21, Chantel Nixon-Clark. It's currently zoned C8 Plan Commercial District. It's on a tract of 2.8 acres on the northeast quadrant of North Highway 67 or Lindwood Boulevard and Robbins Mill Road. As you may remember, the site is located in North County. You can see the site outlined in red on the aerial on the right. And here is the larger aerial with the site once again outlined in red. For purpose of review, this petition initially came before the planning commission on June 28th of 2021. The requested use was for an indoor/outdoor event space, including a wine tasting room, associated food sales, and associated retail sales. The planning commission decision date was July 26th, 2021, recommending approval. And then on June 5th of this year, the petitioner submitted an amendment to the C8 ordinance requesting an extension of time for the site plan review and then an expansion of the wine tasting rooms permitted square footage to 2,100 square feet. Here is the site development plan. The scope of work is really taking place on the area nearest that curb cut, that driveway entrance. You can see it's primarily focusing on an existing building that will have an addition that will, is proposed to house a wine tasting room and a retail outfit primarily for wine and snacks associated with it, nothing made at the store. And then an adjacent outdoor seating area in pavilions. The pavilions will be about 2,600 square feet and the storefront should be about 18, a little over 1,800 square feet. And the petitioner has shown 27 parking spaces that they're expecting to provide. One important thing that the department would like to note that if the property owner ever wishes to redevelop parts of the site outside of the scope of this, what they expect to be an initial phase, the owner will need to resubmit another site plan for an extra layer of departmental review. And then, of course, that would come back to the planning commission. So if they wanted to do any kind of utilization of the other existing buildings on the northern end of the site, that would require another site plan review. So here are the architectural elevations that the petitioners or the property owners submitted to the department. This is for the wine store. And here is the landscape plan submitted. Once again, it's only for the area that makes up that initial phase of development. And the department would like to establish that if the planning commission did decide to vote to approve the submitted site plan, that before submitting it for recording and, you know, the last touches of the approval process, we would need to see the required buffer yard along Highway 67 that's required by ordinance, that this landscape plan does not fully flesh out at this point. And at this point, I would request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion? So moved. We have a second?
Second motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an aye?
Yes.
Okay. But the record shows seven, zero. For the good of the order, anything, Jacob?
I have two things that I'd like to bring to the commission's attention this evening. The first one is I'd like to publicly say farewell to our two trusty interns. Today was Kayla's last day, so she presented that first petition to you.
Friday was Kayla's last day, but she came back special just to present it.
Right, right. So Kayla attends Washington University. This was sort of her first taste of urban planning. And I really thank the commission for allowing and sort of, you know, encouraging staff and as we showed the interns sort of the ropes and let them do some real planning work, because I think that that's really important for individuals as they first start their educations and their careers, to get a real good taste and really experience what planning is really like. So Kayla and then also Shane, his last day is this coming Friday. He's not on the meeting today. He attends the University of Cincinnati, where he's getting his undergraduate in urban planning from the University of Cincinnati. But they were both really, really excellent, and we really enjoyed having them with the department this summer. So thanks to Kayla and Shane. And then the other thing of note for, I want to bring to the commission's attention, is about the comprehensive plan. So we are in the contracting phase with our selected, with our selected team. So Mel, myself, and Peter are working diligently with AECOM Technical Services to work through the scope of work. And we hope that by your meeting in September, we can celebrate with a signed contract and be able to start providing more detailed information subsequent to that. But we are, we are very close to getting that finally on the books. And additionally, although, the third item, although Paul Weatherford, the senior planner for long-range planning, hasn't, doesn't attend too many of these meetings anymore as he doesn't do planning or commission petitions. He is on parental leave for the next nine weeks. So he is missed, but he is a new again father, and so he's at home with his new, with his new baby. So we are glad that he's able to do so. But those are, it's the latest news from the planning department.
All right, appreciate it. Who else have anything to add?
I just want to thank Kayla for her services there and her internship here. Good job.
Thanks to both of them.
All right, well, with that, I think that we don't have anything else for your business.
Make a motion to close?
We have a second?
Second?
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven, zero. And we'll see you next Monday.
Yes, in the council chamber.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a nice week, everybody.
You too. Everyone, thank you.